We are recording.
All right, thank you. You guys ready?
Yep.
All right, let's get started this evening. Welcome, everybody. This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, January 15th, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. Just a reminder, anybody coming forward, speak directly into the microphone, provide your name and address if you would. Just as a piece of advice for those on the board, if you could move your microphones close, we did have some trouble during planning and zoning that there were individuals in the audience who couldn't hear us. So make sure your microphones are close and speak into them. So then, moving forward, I would look for a motion now to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion from Trustee Schneider to approve this evening's agenda. Is there a second? And I have a second from Trustee Andrews. Any further discussion or questions on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. At this time, if we could all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So to start off our evening, we have an introduction to our new deputy clerk, Ms. Holly Bergen. Clerk Bartletti.
Thank you so much, President Vunrazum. And I also would like to thank Holly for attending this evening. On January 2nd, she started her new career with the Village of Swamaco, and she has since proven that we have selected the best qualified candidate for the position of deputy clerk. I would like to introduce her to the board, our staff, and the community. Holly comes to us after 24 years as the senior office administrator at FedEx. She is currently pursuing the three-year certification of Wisconsin Certified Municipal Clerk through the Wisconsin Municipal Clerks Association. We are very excited about her goals to become an election specialist and a valuable member of our clerical team. Please welcome Holly Bergen.
Welcome.
Welcome. Welcome. So was this a big career change for you? Just a different direction?
Yeah.
What was the impetus? I mean, what had you move in this direction?
I'm a keep-going and learning and challenged kind of person. And after 24 years, I kind of conquered that older and didn't have any next steps. So looking for a new challenge.
Well, I think we'll be able to keep you busy for the next 24 years.
I think so. So far, it's been wonderful.
Good, good. Thank you and welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Bergen? Anything? Okay. All right. Moving along, we have item 5B, which is the 2023 Year in Review. Mr. Ben Rogers, Grant Specialist, Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So Ben, go ahead and come on up. This is the second full year that we've had Ben Rogers as a shared grant writer or grant specialist. And I invited him to tonight's meeting to speak to his work efforts in 2023. And Ben, I'll let you just run away with it.
Okay. Thanks for having me here tonight. I prepared a report. It's in your packet. We'll just jump right in. And any questions we can take at the end? So in 2023, the accepted proposals that the Village of Swamaco received was 500 from Walmart for the Calvera Springs Park. FM, we received $1,647.35 from FM Global for an arson investigation kit for the Swamaco Fire Department. We received $9,683 for a confined space rescue equipment kit for the Swamaco Fire Department. That was from Capital Credit Union. Using the success from that one, we were able to approach the WPS Foundation, the Helping First Responders amount, and we received 2,000 for part of the cost of an air supply kit to accompany the confined space rescue kit. And finally, we received $2,505 as a 50% match for the fire department to receive battery-operated chainsaws, extra batteries, and an AED for deployment on the initial attack off-road vehicle. And that's to support wildfire prevention efforts from the DNR. So in total, since 2022, when I started, Swamaco has received $98,493.82 in grant funding from 12 proposals. Of that amount, the largest was 51,000, the smallest was 500. That's made up of grants from state agencies and local businesses and foundations. On the next page here, you can kind of see our breakdown. There's a pie chart. Total amount awarded in 2023 was $16,515.35. We had a 38% success rate. And I do want to say that since I started in total, Swamaco has we've applied for 1,446,613.25. That was through 33 applications. 12 have been successful, so that's a two-year success rate of 36%. Last year, the success rate was 38%. The combined success rate for all municipalities in 2023 was 46%. And that's 13% lower than last year's combined success rate. That is the norm across the industry. Other grant professionals around the country are reporting similar numbers. There's a lot of economic reasons for that, but mostly, I think the main one is, if you look at the year the market's had, 2022, that influences 2023 funding and how much money is available to actually give out. There's a few other ones, perhaps. Organizations getting accustomed to grant funding coming out of the pandemic. So now you have more applicants, and these funds are starting to dry up. And there's also some trends in something called like a donor-advised fund, which the IRS has said there's some stuff going on as a way to kind of cored wealth, not pay taxes on it. You don't have to report it as you do a private foundation. So we're not really sure what's happening with money going into those types of funds. If we look ahead on the horizon to 2024, so right now, we currently have more than $130,000 in two pending grants. One of those is almost $110,000. And that will go to the installation of a culvert with an operable gate on Sunset Beach Road to alleviate flooding. The other $20,000 would go to the installation of diesel particulate filters on fire department vehicles. We were able to complete a application for Calvera Springs Park improvements through the DNR Knowles Nelson Program. It's really great about that program is they tell you exactly how you scored and how everybody else scored. We missed out by one point on the application, and we would have gotten it, except the group that was ahead of us was a bigger budget and took the entire funding allocation for our entire region of the state through this program. So I feel that ended very strong, considering the short timeline we had for that. We're going to try that again. We're going to run it right back. And we also have a 501(c)(3) in the works, which is going to help solicit funding from private foundations to also go towards the park project. The next one here, we do have another chance with FEMA. Our two combined FEMA applications were for $470,000. These keep getting refined. They keep getting sharper with feedback. Meeting with Joe on Wednesday to talk to our FEMA rep to find out how we can be better on that. And I did have success this year with the Village of Howard for a FEMA SAFE for application, the amount of 1.25 million. That's also going to be used to refine our asks here in Swamaco. So that's one of the most competitive grants in the country, and we hit on it for the Village of Howard. So it can happen, and it can happen here. So we're working on that. And then our Citizens Animal Response Team Auxiliary. I've been working with Monica Hoff pretty extensively on a number of applications to get a new dedicated animal rescue vehicle. We've applied to give Big Green Bay. And we're hoping to close a funding gap there. So that would be a vehicle that allows CART to retain volunteers more, respond quicker, and help more animals in all the communities. If we look at our success stories in 2023, I think the first one on the list is our Department of Safety and Professional Services firefighter training grant that we received. Four out of 13 students at Bayport passed FF1 and hazmat on the first try in December. The other nine retook the test on Friday, and they're hoping to earn FF2 here in the second semester. The majority of students passed the hazmat, but the firefighter one test was more of a struggle. It's pretty common. It's a very difficult test, especially for high school students. So everyone is repassing, and we just won't know the results for about 15 days. So we'll hopefully have some students here graduate that program with FF2 status that are ready to join the Swamaco Fire Department as a paid on-call volunteer. Our second success story for the year really is building positive relationships. I don't think you can speak enough to that. We received our second Elevate Communities Award in three years. We successfully closed out a grant with the AAA Auto Club Group. And that 20,000 for diesel particulate filters, that's part of a much larger application to the EPA through the Coalition for Sustainable Initiatives from Milwaukee. These are just some examples of building trust and working collaboratively with other organizations. That's something to highlight. And then our third success story here is what I would call a big-money mindset. And we started to take advantage, at least applying for some of these larger opportunities last year. Four of the applications we submitted in 2023 had a grand total of $719,604.32. One of those is still pending. They are rarely a win on the first try, but it's creating a foundation, something to build upon. I do want to highlight here, too, part of that big-money mindset. The biggest grant we received for the school district was at the amount of $562,950. And that is helping to pay for summer school for all district students for two years. It was a competitive SER III grant. So really, we're taking an approach of correcting potential unfinished learning, a focus on literacy and math. It is not a fun-in-game summer school. These kids are doing work. They're learning. They're putting in. They're making up ground on it. But with this funding, we're able to throw some things in there to really strengthen that and make it a little better atmosphere for everybody. If we can go to the next one, please? So three apiece, three goals for me and three for you here. My first goal is to keep our asks as local as possible or as regional as possible. We are more likely to get support from within the community versus outside of it. That's because the people here know us the best. They're going to be easier to approach, to get into a room to have a conversation with, just to pick up the phone and chat with. Our new 501(c)(3) is going to open up a lot of opportunities for foundational funding. Goal I ask from the board is to keep your eyes open. I do a good job trying to find everything I can, but these smaller opportunities sometimes slip by. So if there's people that you work with or companies that you interact with, you know, ask if they fund projects. And if they do, let Alex know, and we'll be in touch with them. Again, that's another thing we can leverage with the 501(c)(3). My second goal is to build upon some of those partnerships and collaboration efforts that we just discussed. That's getting the name Swamaco out there. It's going to make it better for future projects. And funders really love to see collaboration. And it's easily obtainable, especially with my position here. So I think we can use that to build on our existing success and hopefully parlay that into more opportunities. Second goal for you is to embrace this 501(c)(3) when it rolls out in the spring. This is going to be pretty vital for securing non-government funding. So when I talk about that, I'm talking about private foundation grants, corporate grants. 501(c)(3)'s are great for individual donations, major gift, planned giving, capital campaigns, corporate sponsorships, that sort of thing. Those are all pretty difficult to obtain just as a village. So the part is to use the 501(c)(3), promote it as an active part of the community to help raise funds in multiple ways. And my third goal is to stay the course. So I'm going to keep my head high. I'm going to keep firing off applications. I'm going to keep doing research. I'm going to find the best for us to apply for. 2023, the success rate's not the best. I'll admit that. But it doesn't mean to pull back here. If anything, now's the time to push forward and look for funding from more different groups. Try to broaden our support base. Third goal from this board, please continue to have patience. So grants are still very new here in Swamaco. We're still in the process of laying a foundation. This takes time. Funding trends are cyclical. So we talked before about how the markets kind of affected that. Markets usually find a way to correct themselves. So we're going to get where we need to go, but it's just not going to happen overnight. So that is my 2023 Year in Review report. Are there any questions?
Hey, Ben, what was the difference in the FEMA grant for Howard than us? Could you point to any particular thing why they were awarded and we weren't?
I know Howard asked for, I believe, five firefighters and was awarded four.
But you write those for both, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We asked for one.
Okay.
So I know Howard was also just in the process of rolling out EMS services. So we leaned pretty heavily on that in that application, whereas here, it was focused more on response times.
Okay.
Does everyone on the board and in the audience, does everyone understand what a 501(c)(3) is? Yeah? Okay. All right.
All right.
Good. Stay the course.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So at this time, we'll move to item number six. Item number six is public appearances. This is when anyone in the audience may come forward, speak to any item that they wish that is not on the agenda. If you are here for an item on the agenda and you wish to speak, we can go into public session and have you speak at that time. If you're here for an item not on the agenda, now is your opportunity to come forward, share your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind. Is there anyone here for an item not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move on to item number seven. Item number seven this evening is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda consists of Previous Minutes of the Village Board dated December 18th, 2023, December 2023 Municipal Court Report, December 2023 Treasurer's Report, Item D, December 2023 Recreation Report, Item E, November 2023 Animal Control Report, Item F, November 2023 Fire Report, and Item G, 2024-25 Election Inspector Additions. Are there questions on these items or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion from Trustee Eckert to approve Items 7A through G, Consent Agenda. And that has been seconded by Trustee Schneider. Any other further questions or discussion on these items? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. All right. Item and parade is public hearing. At this time, we have Resolution 23033, a petition to discontinue a portion of Oakdale Drive, part of the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 6 T22N-R20E. Director Smits?
All right, thank you. Back in December, we introduced this resolution here at the board. We went through the process to discontinue the right-of-way off a shady or yeah, just north of shady lane off Oakdale. And tonight, we would be here to have the public hearing for the item and open it up for any comment or any issues that we may need to respond to. But this should satisfy the requirements of vacating that right-of-way.
Thank you.
Correction on the description. It should be Town 25 North, I believe. Not 22.
It's 25 on the resolution.
Okay.
Should be 25.
It's on there now.
It is. So it's correct in the resolution. It was just on the item on the public hearing. Okay. So it is correct. Are there any questions for Director Smits? Okay.
I'm just going to abstain from voting on this because I'm related to a property owner on this, so.
Duly noted, Trustee Andrews will abstain from this vote. Is there anyone in the audience? This is a public hearing. So is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward to speak on this item? You may do so now. Okay.
It says it's Resolution 23033. Is that just because we're revisiting it? Or does it have to be 24 now?
No, it should still be Resolution that it was called or introduced as.
Anyone else with anything?
No, just waiting to see if... Are you good?
I believe we're good.
I'll make a motion to accept the Resolution 23033, a resolution to discontinue a portion of Oakdale Drive in the Village of Swamaco pursuant to State Statute 66.1003.
We have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution 23033 from Trustee Schneider. Is there a second? I have a second from Trustee Neto. Any further questions or discussions? Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Trustee Andrews abstaining. Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Neto?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
President Vunrazum?
Aye.
Motion carries four dash zero dash one.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we are off to item number nine, Planning and Zoning Items. 9A, this evening is Short-Term Rental Ordinance Discussion. Zoning Administrator Dunks.
Thank you. Town Council has prepared a draft ordinance. Planning and zoning did want us to look at the language regarding garbage, garbage cans and whatnot. We did look at that. We have it elsewhere in our code. And our feeling is that it would just be duplicating. So we have not modified that section of this recommended ordinance. The discussion will be on the language currently drafted. If there is a consensus, then this would move forward as an ordinance and be brought forward for a first reading on February 5th. Town Council is present for discussion and questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for our attorney on this item? Are there any questions in general on this item? So the next step on this, if there are no additional changes, this is not the first reading, we would have to...
This is not the first reading.
Okay. So this is really just looking at all of the changes?
We wanted to make sure that before we brought it to a first reading for the board, that the board was comfortable with the language instead of posting it as a first reading and then making a bunch of changes.
Makes sense.
And it'd also be my intent, unless there's objection. There's only 13 or 14 currently active or at least advertised, short-term rentals. It'd be easy enough for me to send a letter to all of them just stating that a first reading will occur on the state, and they can come and provide comments if they so choose.
Perfect. Any questions from the board? Okay, I think we're in good shape.
Is there any... Do you want to do public comment?
We certainly can. So that's a thank you. That's a good idea. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward to speak to this? This has been the reviewed and reviewed and reviewed and reviewed and reviewed item that we have before us. So this will go to a first reading. And I suspect since it has been discussed very thoroughly, it would go to a first reading and then a second reading. And I'm not suspecting there are any changes. So if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to comment on this, now would be a good time. Okay. So I guess we have nothing. Thank you. All right. Moving on, we are off to item 9B. A request by Mike Shepherdson, 2789 Brook Hills Drive, for approval of a two-lot certified survey map as prepared by Verbicker. Parcel SU 670-18, zoned rural residential with PDD, located on the west side of Brook Hills Drive, one-quarter mile south of Anston Road. Zoning Administrator Dunks.
Thank you. We're looking at just over a six-acre parcel here. The PDD for it was approved back in October. That PDD basically allowed for the reduced road frontage on Lot Number Two with two conditions. The formal pond maintenance agreement be created for all three lots and recorded with the Register of Deeds and meeting requirements of all our applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies. The pond agreement has been drafted and will be recorded with the CSM if approval for that is granted. We do not have any sewer water service available. None is expected anytime soon. Your Parkland dedication fee would be due at building permit on Lot Number Two. Your Planning and Zoning Commission did have some discussion regarding the pond and a well that was being used to maintain the water level. So the recommendation from your planning and zoning added a third note to those original two that would require the pond maintenance agreement to be modified, stating that village code does not allow the use of a well to maintain an artificial water level. That pond maintenance agreement has been modified to include that already. I have verified that. So we have that condition met. We really have all three at this point met. So it's up to you guys. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions for Zoning Administrator Dunks? Done?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve a two-lot certified survey map for Parcel SU 670-18 with the following conditions. A formal pond maintenance agreement is recorded at the Register of Deeds along with the CSM. Add a note to the pond maintenance agreement stating that the village code does not allow for the use of a well to maintain an artificial water level and meet the requirements for all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
So we have a motion on the floor for approval of the two-lot certified survey map with the three conditions from Trustee Schneider. Is there a second to this?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Andrews on this. Any other further questions or discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five to zero. All right. Item 9C, request by Scott Sonnenbaum Properties LLC for approval of a three-lot certified survey map on Parcel SU 177 as prepared by Mach 4 Engineering, 2260 South Shider Court, Green Bay, Wisconsin, located on the north side of Lost Trail at St. Francis Park Drive, zoned rural residential. Zoning Administrator Dunks.
Thank you. We're looking at just under a 23-and-a-half-acre parcel here. A four-lot certified survey map was approved back in May. Your new Brown County ESAs created some setback issues. It went from a 35 to a 75-foot setback. So they decided to move this forward as a two-lot with the outlot for future development. Lot One does have the required dedicated frontage, but will only have about 35 feet of actual improved right-of-way. Staff is suggesting limiting the driveway access to that portion that has the improved frontage already. Both lots do appear to meet all other zoning requirements. Both lots do have substantial amount of wetlands, but do meet the buildable area requirements. This area is currently not part of the sewer service area, and water is also not available. Again, Parkland dedication fees would be due at building permit.[1758.33] Your planning commission did recommend approval with the two conditions. Thank you.
All right. Other questions for zoning Administrator Dunks or comments from the board?
If there's nothing, I'll make a motion to approve a two-lot survey, survey map on SU 177 as prepared by Mach 4, surveying with the following conditions. Driveway access for lot one shall be limited to the improvement portion of the dedicated right-of-way and meet the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
So we have a motion on the floor from Trustee Schneider to approve the two-lot certified survey map on SU 177 with the two conditions as stated. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Andrews on this motion. Any further discussion or questions, comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right. We are off to item number 10 this evening. Item number 10A, ordinance 2024-1, creating section 2.11, parent one, parent B, reducing the number of election inspectors. First reading, Clerk Bartoletti.
Thank you, Assistant. Currently, the village is governed by Wisconsin State Statute 7.301A, which is the appointment of election officials number. The, the number is seven, but they do allow you to drop down to five if you do use voting machines. And then you can further reduce that number through this process. And the reason why I am asking is because we do have a primary that's scheduled for February 20th. And currently it involves the Pulaski School District, which I have 247 registered voters within that district. So we really don't need five election inspectors to work that election. It would be helpful also in the central county area for smaller elections to drop that number down to three. So the reason, that's why I'm asking, and I'm hoping that you can support this first reading.
So typical elections, though, would be five or seven?
Typical, we have seven.
Okay, and typically it would be seven?
Yeah.
And it would continue to be seven?
Yes.
Of these three, is it like at least one Democrat, one Republican?
We would still be obligated to meet that balance, yes.
Okay.
That's a good question.
All right, sounds good to me.
Yeah, as long as it gives you flexibility that you need.
So then we will go forward then on the second reading for February 5th. Thank you.
Terrific. Administrative items, item 10B, shared parking lot lease agreement with Pilgrim Lutheran Church. Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So the Village of Swamaco has had a shared parking lot lease agreement with Pilgrim Lutheran Church since 2014. This is in the Idlewild Park area where the Old Town Hall used to be. It's just to the west of that lot, and I'll bring up a overhead of that here. Not the greatest picture, but this is Lakeview Drive. Here's where the Old Town Hall used to be, now Pilgrim Lutheran Church. And this area is the shared parking lot agreement. So in that agreement that was signed in 2014, there was an option for the church to have two five-year renewals, and this would be the second. The only item that could be modified by the board is to increase the rent by 5%. So what's before the board tonight is to approve the, the update to this agreement and charge either 1,200, which is what was charged this last year, or increase that to $1,260 per year. Any questions on this one?
How long has it, the 1,200 dollars been in place?
I believe that was the original amount back in 2014.
Ten years of it.
Yeah.
What is our, do, do we service that?
We really have no obligations. We don't even snowplow that.
I would just leave it then?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
As long as we don't snowplow it.
Yeah, well, there's no investment on it.
Okay, yep, 1,200 is good, wouldn't be.
So we, I would offer a motion then to approve the shared parking lot lease agreement with Pilgrim Lutheran Church at a rate of 1,200 dollars per year. Is there a second?
Second.
We had a second from Trustee Neto.
One quick question, though.
By me?
Who is responsible for the maintenance of it? Like, if there needs to be resurfaced or needs to be repaired, replaced, is that the church or is that the villages?
We would do the resurfacing if there was resurfacing needed.
And is it due?
I'd say in the next probably five to seven years.
How much is something like that worth?
Probably 40,000, 40, 50,000.
But would that be?
But we, we use that parking lot for our own events.
For the park.
That's an Idlewild parking lot, and is it, are you talking about in back of the church or in front of it?
Backside.
Okay.
To the west.
Yeah, because that's just a park, parking lot, too.
We do the general maintenance on it. We've crack filled it in the past. We do the line striping on it. We maintain the lighting and whatever else, but we do not snow remove it.
Okay, I just wanted to know some of them.
And maybe it'll go more than five to six years, but I'd say under 10 probably for the life of that asphalt.
Okay.
You're looking at like Sunday mornings is when it's primarily used.
Yeah.
Is the normal church usage, the, the front lot.
I was just thinking how much, when and if, we have to pay for upkeep for it, that's all.
Yeah.
Not that the 60, 60 dollars or extra is going to make a whole heck of a lot of it anyway.
No. All right, any other further comments or questions?
Just one other question. So then do they plow it?
Yes.
In the?
Yep, they take care of it, it's removable all winter long, for their.
Okay. Right. That's all. Okay, we have a motion on the, on the floor to approve the shared parking lot lease agreement with Pilgrim Lutheran Church at a rate of 1,200 dollars per year. That was a motion made by myself and seconded by Trustee Neto. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are off to item 11, Finance Department Items, Resolution 24001, adopting the 2024 Water and Sewer Utility Budgets. Director Magar.
Yes, we have actually two resolutions that I'm going to be asking you to approve if you so desire naturally. The first one is Resolution 24001, and that would be adopting, actually adopting the water and sewer budgets that were presented in your packet. I know that was pretty small numbers. I have a hard time seeing them. But I had the memo in there that I used for the Public Works and Utility describing what the mechanics that went into it. That we are looking in the water utility, there would be no rate change at this time because it has to go through PSC through the formal rate case application. We will have to do the formal, a new rate case because of the construction or proposed construction of well number five and water number, water tower number two. Our impact fee facility needs study for the water utility is still in progress. And because we're awaiting the updated estimates for well five and water tower number two, we need those estimated construction costs so that we can figure out how much we may need to raise the rates to afford the debt service on all of that construction. The budgeted service revenues for 2024 in the water utility are modestly going to increase about 37,000. The public, mostly because of public fire protection charge that was set by the PSC when we got our newest rate case in June of 2023 increased. There's not much of a usage increase forecast in here. The trend in residential has been decrease in usage actually. And we may have a decrease in our industrial class, too, depending on what happens with one of our customers there. Operating expenses are expected to go up by about 95,000, mostly due chemical costs for treatment on well four are increasing. Salt has risen in price quite extensively. We're going to get a, we have it, had it in the budget that you guys approved for a new GIS system, and the annual maintenance for that increased capability on the GIS is higher than what it has been in previous years. We have the financial consulting fees are increasing due to the study needed on rates for the debt for the new well and water tower. We're going to have to get started on that in 2024 when we get the new construction estimates in. Property insurance and everything has gone up, basically because there were a lot of claims in 22, 23, which drives the premiums for 24, 25. And the cost of parts and everything has skyrocketed. We're going to put a tough book computer in one of the trucks for the water and sewer that's split half and half between water and sewer. I did, you'll notice a shift in the wages if you looked that closely at everything. I took what they actually worked in 2022 and forecast the budget for 2024 based on that and half of 23 of what they, what they worked. For the sewer utility, I've proposed a rate increase of three and a half percent from 990 per thousand gallons to 10 and a quarter. Beginning January 1st, that charge wouldn't go into effect until after the first, when you get your first quarter bill in the end of March, which is due April 20th. Debt service charge of 4434 I'm proposing would still remain on that first quarter bill. Second, third, and fourth quarter and thereafter, the debt service charge I'm proposing would be dropped due to the fact that our last clean water fund loan payment is due May 1st of this year. So all of the VELP interceptor and the Belmont interceptor pipes that went in when we closed our treatment plant and went to GBMSD, that, that will be paid in full finally. So. Let's see, what else? Oh, new water there, they had a 7.9% increase in their operating expense that they charge us. What they proposed for 2024, that's an extra 75,000 a year. Industrial revenue, I'm projecting does rise slightly from 2023 to 2024. In the capital projects, which I also included in your packet. We're doing the lift station pump replacements each year. That's budgeted usually at 70,000 a year. And we're proposing a sewer jetter truck in 2026. Pardon me. The 2024 operating expenses, I'm estimating to increase 128,000 of that. 75,000 is just what we're going to pay new water for treatment. We did increase the placeholder for main breaks by 15,000. That's always, like I said, a placeholder, assuming, we're hoping that it, we don't have to use that money. We're going to have the consulting engineer and stuff for about 23,000 for this sewer study that we're involved in right, right now. And we'll have legal fees because what I would like to see happen, and what I put in the budget, is that we transition through this sewer study from impact fees for the sewer utility to connection fees. Which, impact fees are quite legally restricted on what you can use and when you have to spend them. Connection fees have a little broader depth that you can use them for. And I, I would think with the fact that we're not going to be adding too much to the sewer area and stuff like that, no big subdivisions coming in or any expenses like that. It is my opinion that impact fees collection from now on, we may end up having to refund them in future years if there's not potential for a large expansion to the sewer utility. Therefore, connection fees to me would make a little more sense. And we need a, an attorney to guide us through that process to change our ordinances, to eliminate the impact fee and to write the new ordinance for the connection fee. Let's see. Oh, and then I would need, if you have any, now if you have any questions before I'm asking for a motion to approve the budgets that I had on the large pages that you had in your thing. And there was, it was a unanimous recommendation to the board from Public Works and Public Utility to pass the budgets as I presented them. So I would ask that you approve Resolution 24001. And then what happens if you do, then we have to do 24002 because we have to amend the fee schedule. Are there any questions on?
Just a comment. I mean, you know, we never like to see a rate increase, but the rate increase we're going to get in the first quarter, I think it's really nice to see the second quarter that that debt service fee is going to be off forever. That's exciting.
Well, I wouldn't go into forever, but you know, you never know what's going to happen.
That particular debt is gone.
With the debt payment being completed on that, in those interceptor sewers. And I never thought, it, it's kind of a nice thing to see the debt payment, the final debt payment, because I was here when, when we had to borrow the 9.7 million dollars to put the pipes in.
Almost all paid.
Yeah, yeah, so it'll be great to see that payment go out the door and go.
Yes.
Now, Director Magar, you mentioned that sewer usage has been declining, correct?
Well, in some areas.
And I think there's some nuance to that, and maybe Director Smits could speak more to it, but my understanding is that part of that reason is because the infiltration and inflow has been addressed or being addressed. And say in 2020, when you had standing water on Sunset Beach Road and you had that manhole underwater for months and months and months, and going into our sewer system, we were paying money on that. And with the lower water levels and doing things like smoke testing to address INI, we're seeing reduced costs. And so when you hear about a reduction in the use of sewer, it's not that we have less sewer customers, because in fact we have more sewer customers, but we're addressing the water that's getting into our system.
We had a particularly dry year last year, so we didn't have to experience standing water.
So I just wanted to explain that because I saw some eyes going, hmm, why is that going down?
Well, if, as I said, if I'm forecasting like in our industrial class in water, the water usage going down, that's going to marry hand in hand with sewer going down in that class. Depending on what happens with one of our customers. So I would ask that somebody approve Resolution 24001.
Are there other questions for Director Magar?
If not, I'll make a motion to recommend adoption of.
It wouldn't, sorry to interrupt, it wouldn't be a recommendation. You are the village board, so you either approve it or not.
Approve then. 2024-28 Sewer and Water Budget and Fee Adjustments Retroactive to January 1st, 2024, for the village as presented.
Second. Who's, who's the second?
Andrews.
So there was a motion from Trustee Schneider to approve, approve the 2024 Water and Sewer Utilities budgets of the Village of Swamaco, and that motion to approve was seconded by Trustee Andrews. Any other further questions or discussions from the board? We need a roll call, please.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Neto.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
President Finrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have additional discussion or additional points that you'd like to make, Ms. Magar, with regard to Resolution 24002?
Um, the, the only other, there's a couple of them on the back of that resolution. We would like to also, as long as we are updating this fee schedule, update engineering services that we charge out for, and the engineer, which we currently, that position's vacant. 140 it was, 110. A hundred and forty, it was a hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty. It went up. I asked for twenty dollars extra, a hundred and forty an hour. And to change engineering services for Engineering Tech, which is our new employee, um, that was ninety five dollars an hour in twenty twenty three. Um, I'm requesting a hundred and fifteen dollars an hour for twenty twenty four. Andy did include a, uh, memo in here about the up, upcharge for the stormwater permit. We're asking that first acre, it was three fifty, going to six hundred. Uh, the stormwater permit for each additional acre up to a hundred, and I think that was seventy five. And Andy has the reason why that three fifty to six hundred dollar jump, um, and he can explain.
Sure.
That's a, isn't that a separate item though? Isn't that item twelve?
It's really all embedded in Resolution twenty four zero zero.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pardon me, please, please do. Go ahead.
Yeah, just the update to the stormwater permit. So we had been in previously reviewing those permits, uh, with our own staff. Currently, we don't have staff that, uh, can review those permits and go through the modeling and check the calculations. So we'll have to hire a consultant, quickly go through those plans and just do a review. Meeting with a few different consultants, probably gonna be around that six to eight hundred dollar range, depending on the complexity of the project. So hopefully some are a little less than six hundred and some will probably be a little more that averages out at the end of the year. But we'll know that as we go through a few. So that's when somebody develops a piece of property, they have to pull a stormwater permit with the village. If it's over twenty thousand square feet of impervious surface, they have to have a stormwater plan. The plan and the permit all comes back to us. We review it and make sure it meets all DNR and village requirements and that the modeling and everything checks out for the treatment, minimum treatment requirements, and then we issue the permit back. So it's six hundred for the permit, and if it's a larger site, we'll charge an extra hundred bucks per acre. That's part of that development. So we're just looking to more or less recover our time, uh, when reviewing those, and it's been three hundred and fifty dollars. I don't know for exactly when, but at least two thousand and ten. It's never been increased. So I think it was just time that we update that a little bit.
Are there any questions for Director Magar or Director Smiths? If there's no additional questions, I would offer a motion, um, to approve Resolution two four zero zero two, a resolution setting fees for village services, permits, and property use for twenty twenty four as discussed. Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a second from trustee Andrews. Any further questions or discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
President Fenrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, we are moving on to item number twelve. Twelve A is Luxury Drive Stormwater Pond.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, this last year in March, we received bids for the Luxury Drive dredging project. Uh, it's one of our stormwater ponds. We did go through that back after we received those bids. You guys awarded the project, uh, to Radke contractors. So we proceeded with the award of the project and the notice to proceed, and we sent them our contract manuals to sign. And we didn't hear back from them for several months. We tried to make contact and just were not successful. So after all summer of no, uh, success with them showing up or continuing us to give us a schedule and move forward, substantial completion came and nothing was done. Uh, we had our village attorney draft a notice and send it to them, saying that we would pursue our bid bond and not allow them to bid on any other projects here coming, uh, through the village. Shortly after the letter was sent, we received communication from the contractor that they would finally like to dredge the pond here in early twenty twenty four. Reasons why is they had some staff turnover. They had some things going on internally that weren't good, and, uh, they wanna make the project right and make the, make it whole with the village. But with that, they are asking for a few extra dollars to complete the work. So I'm sure they potentially maybe underbidded a little bit and, uh, realized that they made them, put them in a tight situation to get it done. I do feel the compensation that they're requesting is fair, given what the other bids came in at when we opened bids in March. So if you wanna compare the bids back in March, um, the second lowest bid was over double of what, um, Radke had bidded at. So they now want seventy one thousand, seventy one thousand, seven hundred and thirty three dollars and seventeen cents to complete it. They originally bid seventy three for the total project, but we did, we took care of part B with our own staff, so we removed that eleven thousand. And they were kind of blaming that of the reason why they couldn't make ends meet anymore on this project. So giving them the benefit of the doubt, I still believe it's in the village's best interest to move forward with this dredging project here. In the next month, they wanna do it for the seventy one. Um, it's still a really good price. If we were to scratch this and rebid it out here for this next year, we're probably gonna see prices similar to what the other ones are.
Doesn't it tick you off though that they made our lawyer get involved? I mean.
I mean, we waited all summer. I know that myself and Dylan reached out to them no less than ten times collectively.
Do we want them to do it?
They're, they are a good contractor. They do a lot of DOT work. They do a lot of big stuff. I think there was just some oversight on the staff that was working on this division of their company. And like I said, they were very apologetic and said they had a ton of turnover here, um, over the last month or two. So it sounds like it was more of an internal thing, miscommunication, whatever. Doesn't make it right. But I still feel like if they perform a duty for seventy one, we're getting a much better price than if we were to rebid this thing out.
Is there any kind of thing that we can put into the agreement, you know, since this is the second time of some type of financial compensation on our part?
Don't think we can do any more than what the bid bond is in the contract. And that's only five percent.
Yeah, no one's really happy about it, but the alternative is to cost taxpayers about fifty thousand dollars more next year, so we'll hold our, our spite.
Yes, yes, I hope we do.
So we did meet with them. I met with them out on site here a week ago and we walked the site, went through the project. They did get the contract manuals back to me already with this update, hoping that it was approved tonight. So we are steps ahead of where we were this last March already.
Maybe.
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 It's not done yet, that's for sure. So I just wanted to reiterate, um, keep in mind, these quantities do fluctuate with these types of projects. So we would be asking for approval of a base price of seventy one thousand. There is always a swell factor in the material that's brought out. It's never a known quantity, so, um, it could be slightly more. It could be less than that as well. We tried to estimate high this time because we undershot it last project, so just keep that in mind as well. And I can always provide an update too if it, if it goes over.
If there's nothing, I'll make a motion to approve the pond dredging project to Radke Construction for a base price of seventy one thousand, seven hundred and thirty three dollars and seventeen cents, using funds from the Pond Cleaning Sinking Fund.
I'll offer a second on that. So motion by trustee Schneider to approve the pond dredging project to Radke Contractors for the base price of seventy one thousand, seven hundred and thirty three dollars and seventeen cents, and I have offered a second to that. Is there any further questions?
Oh, no, no. I don't have anything.
Nothing? All right. Um, let's do a roll call on this.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
President Fenrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Okay, item twelve B, Windrush Drive Roadway Improvements. Director Smiths, it seems like your show this evening.
I know. I'm holding up Monday Night Football for you guys.
You sure are.
All right, uh, Windrush Drive development is mostly completed and ready to become accepted as a public street. Uh, staff had been part of the design and inspection throughout the whole project. Uh, we facilitated everything, um, for construction. We pretty much ensured all aspects were met throughout the project and everything seems satisfactory. Uh, the village board needs to accept the roadway development for formality purposes so that the building department may issue building permits. The developer has completed all payments for the construction to date, and everything is satisfactory. We will issue an amendment to the developer's agreement that secures the funding for the surface asphalt that is still left to be placed. Uh, we are gonna place that in two thousand and twenty five. That'll give that development all this summer to get beat up by contractors building houses, and then we'll put down the surface lift of asphalt in twenty five. Um, it kind of prolongs the surface a little bit longer through its life. And, uh, also we are paving a significant amount of other roads tentatively in that area in twenty five as well. So it'll work out well with having a paving contractor out there.
All right, other questions for Director Smiths on this?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, and the acceptance of Windrush Drive.
Motion from trustee Schneider to approve the acceptance of Windrush Drive. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second from trustee Eckert. Any other further discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five to zero. All right, item twelve C, DNR Water Utility Update Audit Update. Director Smiths, it's up to you to take this baby home.
Last one. Let's hit it out of the park. Uh, the water utility recently went through its three-year audit with the DNR. So every three years, our water supply engineer with the DNR requests all necessary information to review and go through. Uh, so the second page in your packet was the email list that she sends to us, um, about a month in advance of our meeting date. Um, it is a really thorough list of everything, anything from the operating mechanics of our water utility, our wells, our water tower, our sampling. Um, everything that we do, we go over, um, in one day. Uh, we provide her with all that information ahead of time, so she has a few weeks to go through it and make notes, comment, and, uh, tell us what we're doing wrong. Um, so she, after she reviews all that, she gives us a list of what we need to go over. We meet, uh, in person for, uh, the whole day, and we go through all the wells in person. We go through the water tower, and then we sit down for about four hours and go through all the information. Following the review, we always get a notice of determinations. And this cycle, I'm extremely satisfied to present the latest report of our audit. Um, in there, one of the lines that Wendy wrote is, "The Swamaco Drinking Water System is in excellent condition, and the operators should be commended." Um, that definitely isn't taken lightly. I've never had that comment before and have been part of multiple water utilities and not ever had it here before. So we're definitely heading in the right direction and making a lot of progress in a lot of areas that, you know, may have been overlooked for many years. Um, so we still received a list of recommendations, but they are distribution system related. Uh, the village board should commend and be proud of the utility operators for their hard work in system management. They pay attention to all the fine detail within the utility. They continually go above and beyond, and it shows when you receive a statement like that from your regional, you know, uh, water supply engineer. Uh, I know that she doesn't issue that statement often, and, and, you know, it's hard to, to get that out of her, and it was pretty nice to read that. So again, just wanted to say thank you to Matt, Cory, and Dennis for their work in the utilities and just kind of present to you the report that we get back from her.
Good job.
Awesome.
Yeah, I mean, congratulations to you and your staff for, for receiving that comment about something as important as, as, as our water. Okay. There's, there's no action?
Nope, update only.
Excellent. Okay. Item number thirteen, Discussion on Future Agenda Items. Does anyone have future agenda items that they would like to discuss?
No, but Happy New Year, everybody.
Not a, uh, agenda item, just a reminder. Unfortunately, uh, classes start back up next week, and I have classes on Monday until quarter of nine in Madison. So I will be gone for the meetings in February, March, and April. I'll be back in May, unfortunately. I can't get out of it. I can't have them change it.
Understand. So if there are items that you wish you'll be.
I will be in contact with you.
Okay, very good.
And I'd like to just give a quick shout out to our DPW Plow Crew. I think yesterday was their first day off in thirteen days. They've had a couple of back-to-back weekends of snowstorms, so I appreciate all their time that they've taken away from their family to take care of the village's swamaco.
Thank you.
Thanks.
They did a.
Thank you. They did a great job.
Lot of snow.
All right, anyone else? If there is nothing else, I would look for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
I'll make that motion. Be my last one for a while.
So we have a motion from trustee Schneider to adjourn this evening's meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from trustee Andrews. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Kay, for your job well done on the.